Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, we are, I'm going to take a motion to exit our executive session here at 6:02 and enter into, back into open session. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, vote. Gates.
Yes.
Dinwiddie.
Yes.
Lindwall.
Yes.
Burkowski.
Yes.
Rangelini. All right, we will move on to public comment now. Seeing no hands raised virtual nor any in-person guests tonight, we will move forward with our student report. We have Jane Ryan and Jonah Rydel with us. Welcome back.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thanks for having us. So first up is our athletic update. Our athletic teams are off to a great start. Golf has nine wins, zero losses, zero ties. Boys XT is going one-for-one, wins and losses, and same with girls, cross-country. Volleyball is five wins, one loss. Good hockey is three, three and one. Boys soccer is three, three, one and one. Girls soccer is three and one. And football is two wins and no losses. So we're looking forward to seeing how our fall teams do. Some more updates. Expectations tonight was on Thursday, September 12th. Caregivers met in a pack and with the administrative team to go over our new updates for the school year. And then student leaders led parents throughout the hallways. And I think it was a great night, Jonah. I don't know if you were there, we did some fundraising and lots of NHS students were there to show parents around. From the, oh, the Celeste Choir at Citro High School performed the National Anthem to the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Officers and Hyannis on Thursday, September 19th. From what I heard, that went well. And Mr. Luet and the freshman team is developing a support plan for the freshman students. They will be instituting a multi-tiered student support plan that Gates currently uses. And this will be a way to proactively improve Citro High School's support for each student.
Citro High School will also be on tomorrow and Tuesday will be hosting a college night. And Mr. Adams on October 4th will be running another This Is Our House event in school for all students. Also be a college workshop on, for seniors of Citro High School on the 25th. And parent caregivers are welcome. Have a college workshop on the 26th, Wednesday. And financial aid night will be on October 8th. Citro High School will also be hosting the PSAT on Tuesday, October 29th for our 10th graders and Wednesday, October 30th for 11th graders. And it will begin at 8:15 on both days, so no late starts. And then we were given a couple of statements from several students to talk about the new cellphone policy and one thing that inspires students at SHS.
All right. Do you want to start with the cellphone policy? Okay, so from students, this is one quote from a student. "I think cellphones pose a great risk to the education and mental health of students. I think the implementation of this new cellphone plan has been very successful and has gone without practically any opposition from my peers."
And another student shares, "I believe that the system of putting the phones away during class, but having them be allowed outside of class and during homeroom is a good policy and a good balance of having and not having your phones. I believe this because while it limits phone time, it helps keep his concentration on class and not distracted by their phones. It also allows for communication and other abilities during free time, such as homeroom, lunch, or passing time." And then reading a quick segment on...
So this was Mr. Gates' idea. He wants us to share kind of what inspires students at Citro High School and some of the quotes we liked. One of them was, "Using my voice to enact change inspires me. Citro High School needs to do better with valuing diversity, equity, and inclusion and treating them with the same importance as sports games. Citro High School also needs to focus more on providing mental health support to its students due to the epidemic of depression running through our school and country."
And then another student says, "I am vice president of my class. Working with my peers is constantly inspiring me. We work so hard to contribute to a common good, ensuring our class is inclusive, fun, and full of opportunities for all, specifically seeing the level of dedication that Ms. Hayden and Mr. Kurmand, the 12th grade teacher advisors for our student government, put into our class is completely inspiring to me. They are so dedicated to students and I hope to be like this someday." Okay, thank you, and that's all we have for tonight?
Any questions? I have a question. As student leaders, how do you feel about the new cellphone policy yourselves?
I do not mind it. Honestly, I think that in my classes, the phone use phones haven't been a huge problem. I will say, like, I think that the phone policy definitely impacts the underclassmen more. And I personally would not be too upset if Citro went to no phones at all during school time. I think that important part is like the hallway time and lunchtime to be communicating with people and like making connections with people you wouldn't normally talk to. So that's my take on it. I know some people are opposed to this, but...
Yeah, and I don't want, I don't want phones to terminate on campus, but I do feel that this is a pretty lax policy. And just putting them away during class is something that, you know, half of my classes were already doing last year. And again, similar to what some of our statements said, like, I don't feel it to be intrusive at all and it's very simple to just put my phone away during class and then if I need to contact someone, then I can just do it during lunch or my wind block or passing time. And I feel it's a good compromise and it shows how much respect that our, our school district has for us, allowing us to still keep them.
Interesting perspectives. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Superintendent Burkhead with a donation here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a donation from the Google Team Mental Health Initiative. So I think the normal question would be, what is that? The Google Team Mental Health Initiative, under the umbrella of Google's Philanthropic Branch, is a $10 million initiative to provide mental health resources to high school students and teachers in the United States. Recently, Rebecca O'Donnell, special ed teacher at Citro High School, was awarded with a classroom donation of $1,000. And I just wanted to share some of the things that she got and I'd like to congratulate her and the kids for this. But I thought these, some of the things, I won't list all the things that she was able to purchase with this. Some of these are pretty cool sounding, might want to join the classes. Have fun with these scramble squares, playing its nine-piece puzzle. Challenge and Brain teaser with 161 unique art styles for all ages. Shishibo shape-shifting box, which is an award-winning patented fidget cube with 36 rare earth magnets, transforms into over 70 shapes. Engaging trivia quiz included with the mobile app. And the last one is a Studio Active Chairs adjustable wobble stool. Flexible classroom seating, which improves focus posture and helps all students, including those with sensory issues. So I thought there's some great, fun learning tools for the kids. Want to just thank Ms. O'Donnell and Google Mental Health. And I would ask that the school committee approve this donation.
Excellent, thank you Superintendent Burkhead. Take a motion on the Google Team Mental Health Initiative donation. For, from Hyannis.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the donation from the Google Team Mental Health Initiative, as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, in-state field trip for Model UN conference. Ms. Willinger and Ms. Traer. And company.
We'll, we'll present first and then we brought some of our officers with you to share a little bit. I feel like, you know, we come before you every year at least, you know, one or two times. And I think it's nice also to see the kids and to see the impact that things are having. So these are four of our five officers this year, which is really great. So we're excited to be before you today to put forth two different conferences. One to the Harvard Model United Nations Conference in January and the other to the Yale Model United Nations Conference in Europe, which is held this year in Switzerland. And I know that we've been here a million times. But I thought it was interesting or just important to recognize that last year was the 20th anniversary of Citro, Model United Nations. So as a group, I wasn't the first one to start it. I started maybe in 2005. But Norm Shakosius, who was the department chair, started, started back in 2003 and really just took a few kids to Harvard. That was where they went every year. And this club now has just grown dramatically. We have close to 50, 60 students every year participating. So it is one of the largest clubs at Citro High School. So I just wanted to share that. We haven't, our first conference that I wanted to present today is the Harvard Model United Nations Conference. And we've gone in the past, like I said, it's been quite a few years since we've gone. The dates are from January 30th to February 2nd. And we're really looking at this as an opportunity to build the club from the ground up. Because right now, we're really senior and junior heavy. And it, as you can imagine with, you know, sports teams, if you have all seniors and juniors, you have no youth coming up. And so that's one of the things that we wanted to do by having a closed conference where we could perhaps take as many kids that are interested to be able to go, to be able to replace the 40-ish seniors, I think, about that, that we have. So it's a pretty big, really strong group that we're replacing. But we need to sort of open up those opportunities for, for young people because they haven't been able to have that opportunity to go yet. This particular conference should be pretty straightforward because we're going to be taking a bus to Boston. They're going to drop us off. It's similar, it's held in Copley Plaza like in, in past years. And we'll be taking, we imagine around 45 students. It might be give or take, you know, might be 50, might be 40. But we think we have the interest probably for that amount and we'll take five chaperones with us. The exciting thing this year, and this kind of leads us into the other piece too, is that we actually have two students who are sophomores right now. I just lost it. Victor Boker and Anna Kelly, who are both competing on the college Model UN circuit now, which is a really high level. Anna's competing in Georgetown and Victor's competing at Harvard. So Victor is actually going to be running one of the committees that we are going to. So it's kind of a nice tie-in, so that's why we wanted to especially go to Harvard this year. Do you want to add anything about Harvard?
I think just that, because I teach primarily underclassmen and we had a lot of interest the last couple of years. But when we go further away, we obviously can't take as many students. So I think they sound really excited for the opportunity to go to one that's also close to home and give it a shot. So, and we have a really great group of upperclassmen to mentor and lead them. So I feel like it'll be a very good opportunity for them too.
Would you like us to present the other one too? Or do you want, or do you have questions on the Harvard trip?
Any questions?
Is it, I didn't look at the calendar, is it a weekend? Is it Friday to Monday?
It's on the weekend.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, so it'll be like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It is after the mid-year exam, so it's not going to interfere with that. And that's probably the best time to sort of miss because it's not like the week before exams. Students might be changing classes, but it'll be right in the beginning if they're taking like a semester course. But for the most part, it's a, it's an easier time to leave than before that.
Well, I'll take a motion on the first conference to Harvard. We'll vote them one at a time.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the UN Model Boston Field Trip, as presented.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you.
The second trip, this is really a step for us. And this was something before Ms. Traer's joined me here that Mr. Matasoff and I had been talking about, thinking about trying to expand the club and take the next step to join some really competitive conferences internationally. With the pandemic that put a hold on things and then the next few years after that, we said, "We're just going to stay local, we're not going to really go too far." But we wanted to be able to provide students with really high-level opportunities in really competitive conferences in a similar way that they would do if they were on the College Model UN circuit. Because as I said, we have students that are going to do that now and we'd like to prepare them for those opportunities. And so what we are proposing is to go to Geneva, Switzerland in March. And it would be March 9th through the 17th or 18th, depending on flights. It's run through Yale University. And we chose that specifically because there are a lot of smaller conferences that are held and things like that. And we really wanted to go through a very reputable university and conference that we felt would be well-run as opposed to kind of taking our chances with, you know, some other conference that's held just locally, like in the, in country, wherever we go. We also picked Switzerland because it, there were some other ones that Harvard hosted in Abu Dhabi and other places, which, Morocco, which seemed fabulous. But maybe this is just a good first step. We'll come back and talk about Abu Dhabi some other time. But this seemed like a good first step for us in an area that we felt we could take students with us and feel comfortable. We would be leaving on a Sunday. And again, because they're going to be in, in the conferences, we'd like them to be able to experience the culture, experience the area and things like that as well. Geneva is an exciting place to go because that's where the United Nations has their European offices. So it is a really great place for us to go to sort of be a part of the sort of United Nations internationals here in Europe. And we're hoping to take a tour of the United Nations in Europe. Many of these guys had gone on the UN tour in New York. So it's kind of interesting to sort of dovetail there. The conference itself is held in the Intercontinental, which is probably the nicest hotel that you could stay in. But they have discounted rates, but everything is there. So the students would stay there, the conference is held there. We'd be looking to do some travel in the area before and maybe not after, but before that. But only really limited, close by, you know, a couple hours by train in, in the area. The cost, we're looking at about $2,500 to about $3,000 for the cost. We've done a number of fundraising activities. We've done the Lobster Roll fundraiser like we did in previous years. We're doing a car wash. We have a raffle that's also coming up. The Yale offers financial aid for students as well so that they can apply individually for financial aid. And Community Christmas has always been really supportive of kids going to help fund students or sightseeing and things like that. So we don't want this in any way to be cost prohibitive for, for students because we think it's a great opportunity. And so we're able to sort of work that out as best we can. We originally on the sheet put down that we'd like to take 30 students. We had tryouts for the, for the, for the trip. And we have 39 students who tried out. They are all fantastic students and we would really love the opportunity to be able to take all 39. They're mostly all juniors and seniors with one, one sophomore. We've traveled with all of these students before. We, we feel good about, you know, taking that larger size group. But if we require taking five, we require by the, by the school committee policy to take four. But knowing that things come up on these trips, we'd like to take five chaperones with us. Because if, you know, I'm taking students for, you know, health issues, we still have four other adults that are there. So we'd like to kind of buffer ourselves that way and bring five adults. And the class itself doesn't include like the food incidentals and things like that, although it does include breakfast in the hotel. And I don't know if you would like to ask questions for us first or if you want our students to talk a little bit about why this is exciting now.
Anything else here from the students?
Sure. So can you guys just introduce yourselves and talk a little bit about?
Hello. My name is Nikolai Bokovich.
I'm Jake Lenell.
And we're the captains of the Citro High School Model UN team. We're the head delegates. I'm the head delegate of fundraising and he's the head delegate of...
Education.
Yeah. So for me, I didn't start Model UN until my sophomore year, really. And I joined and I went to our conference to New York. And I remember I came back and Ms. Willinger was my, was my US One teacher. And I walked into her room the day we came back or maybe, maybe a couple days afterwards. And I hadn't signed up to go to one of the three trips that year. And I walked into her room and I'm like, "Ms. Willinger, can I please go to this other trip? Like, can I go to all of these trips all the time?" Because, and it's, it's not just the travel that you're, that you're going, that you're going somewhere cool. And that's a part of it, obviously. But it's also that you're getting such a valuable academic experience. You're getting such a valuable experience within, within having this debate with people, within having conversations and facilitating a conversation like that. It's, it's, it's real-world skills that are actually very impactful. And not only that, but it's, it's the work you put in beforehand. You research these real-world topics that are actually having an impact. And I thought that was, that was so incredible. I, I pretty much ran for treasure as soon as I could. And then all last year, I was kind of like talking to Ms. Willinger and Ms. Traer and being like, "Hey, we should go international, we should go international." And here we are now, where we have this awesome opportunity to go to a well-run, to a well-run conference in an amazing diverse culture. And I think it's, I think it's something special that we, that we would love to be able to experience as students.
Yeah. To second that, I'm going off of Ms. Willinger's said about the culture aspect of Model UN. I recently went to California for the trip. And on the way to Alcatraz, I got to meet some Mormons that went to BYU. And it was really cool to kind of like learn about their experience and like learning about like their college experience compared to my high school experience and just that as a whole. I actually think that's a major part of like Model UN, just like going to these new places, new countries, if approved, and like learning about their culture, the people there, their food, kind of getting to interact and network with these like international citizens would be amazing and a really cool experience.
I just have a, I just have a quick question. I think this is amazing, this is fantastic stuff. I just have a question. We hear a lot about Model UN, but can you give me like a sample of one of the questions that you guys might be debating or arguing? Or can you just give me an idea of what it is you might be doing at one of these conferences?
Yeah, so one example, the example we did for our, our tryout for our, our Geneva trip this year was we proposed the question of how the debate over Taiwan should be settled. How, what's happening with China right now where they are encroaching on Taiwanese territory and Taiwan is claiming independence and China is perpetuating the one-China policy and denying their independence under their two-systems-one-country policy. And having students look into that, you get a lot of diverse perspectives. You have students that are representing a perspective that you sometimes wouldn't even see. You have students representing Afghanistan, a country that you normally wouldn't hear a perspective like that, especially in the United States. But you also have students representing unique perspectives like the Philippines, who are currently having a similar issue where China's encroaching on their sea space to try to take over more, more area in the Asian Pacific. So you get, you get a lot of like unique perspectives looking at the same issue. And like, that's just an example of an issue, but there's, you could have, you could have a question on how to deal with the Ukraine crisis. Or you could have historical committees, like you could go back in time and like talk about the fall of the Berlin Wall. So there's a lot of different ways that you can, that you can take advantage of this debate-style setting and like really deepen your knowledge about like what's happened in history and what's happening now.
That's a tough one. On that example you gave of Afghanistan, like, are you assigned a particular country? So you're not always going to be United States perspective, correct?
Yes, you're assigned a, you're assigned a particular country. So actually normally there's only one or in some occasions, two students per committee that are going to be the United States. And most of the other students will be representing a different country in the United Nations, which encompasses, I believe, upwards of like 80, 90, 100 countries. A lot, yeah. A lot of the countries in the world are in the United Nations. Most committees that we'll, that we'll see will have 50 to 60 countries at max and maybe like 20 to 15 if it's a small committee, a specialized committee. But they all bring in these unique perspectives that you wouldn't normally see in, in the Western world sometimes.
Yeah, like, to go back to one of my conferences, I was serving on in a committee about the Amazon rainforest. I had to learn about like the indigenous people there, how to like incorporate that in my solution and like learn about the corruption within the country as well. It's a great experience, like learn also about these countries as a whole that you never get to learn about if you weren't in Model UN.
Awesome, thank you.
I do have two others that just wanted to say a quick word. I know we don't want to take up too much time. Just introduce yourselves first.
My name is Bradley Bossi.
I'm Patrick McCarthy.
So I'm a senior here at Citro High School. I'm the elected historian from Model UN. And I really wanted to be here saying, because I think it's important that we give a voice to the many students in Model UN who are really passionate and excited and optimistic about what an overseas conference has to offer. From my experience, I know that conferences really can change a person. At Model UN conferences, you're essentially locked in a room for sometimes hours. It's good though, don't worry about it. With people who are really smart people, who know that every voice counts when it comes to making a decision. I think that like Model UN for me has enhanced my public speaking skills, my cooperative, cooperation skills. And in addition to that, we, our task is to create resolutions for issues that affect the world, millions of people. And so we get a lot of, we get really into it. You know, we spend weeks researching particular issues. And so like, I think the integrity of this club is very important to us. The second trip I attended was in Washington DC. It was the first time I ever been on an airplane. It was the first time I ever been to a major city without my parents and I paid for half of the trip by myself. And that's largely because I, I could, I knew the opportunities that this trip had to offer for me. So following this experience, I ran for class vice president since I, I was inspired by this conference to become more engaged in my, in my community. So I ran for class vice president, I won. And so I highly credit Model UN for changing me as a student and a person. Because before Model UN, I was, I was very uninvolved in school. I got good grades, but I was uninvolved. And then after Model UN, like I said, I prioritized civic engagement and enrolling myself in different clubs. And so now today, I'm leader of four clubs. I, I highly credit Model UN a bit. I actually wrote a lot about Model UN in my college application process. But in conclusion, just like you said, I, I share that story because I think Switzerland has the ability to do that for many other students. I know there's so many students who begin Model UN as a freshman. You know, shy, uninvolved, but they're willing to grow as a student. And I think Switzerland serves as a great opportunity to allow that. So I encourage you all to vote yes on this because I'm super excited. I think it's the greatest opportunity high school has given me. And I thank you for your time.
Patrick, anything else?
I, I'll make this quick. I'm Patrick McCarthy, I'm a junior at Citro High School. I'm the treasurer of Model UN. I just wanted to make a quick point on like really how many opportunities Model UN can give you and how there's something for everyone. I'll mention two committees I've done, my time here at Model UN. My first year, my first committee in New York, I participated in a committee called DISEC, which was a committee on like national security and arms, which I thought was really interesting and that was really cool. We talked about, I think the topic was, it was, it was like smuggling and like drug smuggling and stuff like that over... And that was really cool. We talked about, I think the topic was, it was, it was like smuggling and like drug smuggling and stuff like that over across Europe. And I thought that was really cool because I was Germany in that committee and there was so much stuff. I, there's so much information I didn't know, like it was going on across the world and in Europe and stuff like that. Like there was like human trafficking, there was drug smuggling, there was all these different methods. And we had to, we had, we discussed about that for days and we found a solution which was really cool. And then also, so that's something called a general assembly. It's normally like a more real world committee and stuff like that. But then, which is actually my more personal favorite, there's also a committee called crises. And these crises, um, these crises, they're more specialized and they're more like historical or like, like other things. Like, uh, uh, one that I did last year, which was really cool, was actually Roman Carthage. So it was, um, it was about the Second Carthaginian War and it was a joint crisis. So there was one side, there was one crisis room that was Rome and there was another side that was Carthage. And what was really cool about this is everybody had a role, everybody had a position. And there was like a, um, like a war table set in the middle of the room. And the decisions you would make in this committee would, would move tri- like troops to separate parts of like Rome and Carthage. And it was really, the whole committee was trying to win this war. And your decisions that you made, these paths that you formed, these groups that you formed would do that. So that was like really interactive and it was kind of like, it kind of showed the importance of every decision you make. And I thought that was really, really cool. And like, if like, I feel like if more people had that opportunity, like I did, like they could really like fall in love with Model UN, just like I did. Like it's, it's truly an amazing and wonderful experience. I've, I've never had a bad experience in Model UN. And I think if, if we get this, um, Switzerland committee, uh, committee approved, I think, I think it would be another amazing experience for our students here. And I'm just, uh, really looking forward to it. Thank you.
I have one, I have one question. So I think, I think most easily you'll convince us that this is a great program. How do you convince the younger classmen that they should begin to participate in UN? How do you get the word out?
Well, I am very proudly in control of the Instagram account. So we, of course, you know, social media is crazy, especially that, but, um, I think, you know, a lot of, Model UN is intimidating to a lot of people, of course. Um, but I think having leaders like us who are so, like we're involved in sports, we're involved in many other things. I think that is very influential in getting the word out. Um, so yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. I'm going to talk.
Yeah, um, I was just kind of talking about it, but also it is just kind of the fact that there's so many, such a, like a varying range of committees and things you could do. Like there really truly is, like anything, like so much, there's, like there's bigger committees. There's like WHO, like the, the World Health Organization, there's stuff like that for people who love health. And also I've seen things like, I've seen like an AFL versus an NFL merger. I've seen like Star Wars committees. I've seen like, like if fashion committees. If you're, if you're in Model UN, there's no doubt in my mind that you won't find something that you love and you'll find some committee that you love. Like it's, the, I've truly in every committee I've had, I've never hated it. I've, I've, I, everybody love, everybody I've talked to, everybody that's in Model UN, everyone that's joined Model UN said it's been a positive experience. They love what they've done. It's just, there's, there's really no downsides to it, to be honest. That's.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Question?
Um, well, thank you very much.
So they've worked on their public speaking skills and they're really persuasive. So, so we're happy to answer any questions that you have about the trip itself, about Model UN.
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
Cause in always keeping in mind like cost for students, um, and this trip is like a little over a week. Is it necessary to go that, that, that whole timeframe to attend the conference?
The conference itself, um, is not the whole week. But I think if we're going to travel to Europe, we want to make it worth their while to be able to explore things as well. Um, so I think, you know, typically when students go on a Model UN trip, like when we went to California, we went from a Wednesday through a Tuesday. Um, and so we've typically, when we've gone on larger trips, we go for shorter times. Um, no, other way around, for longer times. Sorry, sorry. If we've gone on larger trips, we've gone for longer times. Um, I think definitely just for them to be able to adjust, to be there, to be able to see things both in Geneva, um, but then also in, it's right in, you know, right near France and, and Italy as well. For them to be able to explore that area would be really great. And I know there's a lot of students who are taking a lot of different international trips this year. And we have had students that have said, you know, that they're not going to be able to go on this trip because they have chosen to go to the Galapagos or they're choosing to go to another thing. So I do feel like there are opportunities for, for students to be able to bring down their costs as well. So we're going to continue, continue doing that. But I, this is sort of the upper end of what it probably is going to cost. Um, but we overestimated because we didn't want to come in underestimating and then going back. Um, so we've overestimated, it's probably around twenty-five or a little bit less than that.
I mean, you have like March ninth to the seventeenth, is that, I'm like.
So we're still working.
It's kind of like flights depending on what day you leave.
Yeah, and so that's sort of where we are. The nice thing about the day that we're coming back, um, one of the reasons that we're coming back on that day is that students, we have a professional development day. So that students will have a day off, which will then also allow them to get their work done. Uh, because they have very little time when they're on these trips. So to be able to come back and to be able to have a day to like readjust both time-wise and homework-wise, that was sort of what was leading us to come back on that later end. Um, we would be back at school, but they could have a day.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fantastic. That is my only concern is that they're technically missing a week of school and that provides, you know, presents its own anxieties in terms of like every other class that they're in.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, yeah, go ahead.
That is definitely something we made pretty clear to them. And I will say a lot of the students we have in Model UN take a pretty rigorous course load, especially as juniors and seniors. Um, and they've practiced this going to California and New York of reaching out to their teachers ahead of time, making their own schedule, setting up deadlines when they get back. And I do think they've done a really nice job in the past of holding themselves accountable with their learning and staying on top of it. Um, because it is a lot of school to miss. And we have some that did say that, you know what, like five days is just like a couple too many for me. Uh, but it comes to others who really want to go to Harvard, so it's definitely a big decision that way.
I feel like that's also a bigger high school conversation of, as like you're mentioning, so many other trips and students want these things and these are amazing opportunities. I think it's important. I totally support all of it. And, you know, I know even just missing for, you know, banned for Disney last year for like three, four days was, had an impact in, you know, how that sort of ripples into catch-up time. And oh, how did you get XYZ on that? It was, well, I was in Disney. Ooh, okay. So now we have to sort of play catch-up. So I do have a concern about that globally, not for any, anyone in particular or any particular group or class taking a trip. But, you know, I, I've never, as a school committee member, approved a trip this long, missing that many days of school. There are always over weekends and vacations.
Or vacations, yeah.
So that's my only concern.
Yeah, so they would miss the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So it would be five days. Um, when we've gone before, they've missed four days. So, and those have been approved before and just with the length of travel and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, but I do hear what you're saying and, and, and yes, it is a challenge for students. And I think, you know, for, for a lot of students too, it's a matter of recognizing what they need to do ahead of time. It's things that we drive home with them. I don't know if you guys want to add, do you want to add something?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so.
Come over here, because you have to be on the.
Yeah, the TV.
This is like real life Model UN.
Yes, I know. They can, they can help you with your motions too. These, these guys are also Model UN students, so we're, we're all here, so.
Well, you can take us all on, all of you.
For me, um, I think that the, the real thing with the missing school is the kids that are in Model UN are such high achieving individuals. There are none of the students in Model UN would accept missing school and not being able to catch themselves up or not being able to deal with the missing workload. Me, me and Jane are both the top five percent of our class, the two sitting in front of you right now. And I mean, that's, it's no coincidence that these are the type of people that are, that are doing this trip for the, the academic experience, the experience of being able to get that debate, the debate in the real world issue solving in. And it's, it's no mistake that these students are such high achieving individuals. And I personally think that despite the fact that they're missing five academic days, there's no way that the students that are going on this trip would not be able to recover academically or not be able to plan ahead, be able to make the adjustments necessary to be able to miss that many days of school.
I just wanted to add that I did the Spanish exchange trip in April and I think I did miss five days of school for that. And in all honesty, that was, I was essentially a tourist. It was an incredible experience. I learned so much about the Spanish culture. But with Model UN, the kids who sign up for these trips, like you have to do a lot of work outside of school to prepare for them. And you're honestly saying, yes, I do want to learn more. I do want to do more work outside of school. And I don't think it's a problem for these students to have to catch up on the work they missed because they just want to learn so much about the world. It's a great opportunity.
Well, you guys are great and I can see why you're so good at Model UN. But, but, but this is interesting topic because internally here, we're trying to minimize the number of days away from school. I'm just curious if the district knows, do these count as days of absent, being absent?
They're excused.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
They're excused.
Excuse according to the testing.
According to testing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just curious because like these are, these are the types of days that I would think would be okay to be absent from school. But if we were getting.
For academic days.
If we were getting marked down from the state audit, it would be a sort of a compromise. Yeah.
We would not.
Okay.
Can I also just add to, um, that most classes are, all classes really have, they have access to the work while they're gone. Um, and so it's not, you know, up by Google Classroom and things like that. So usually on our way there or on the way home, they are already tackling their assignments on Google Classroom. You have people that are working in the evenings trying to keep up with their work. They're pretty disciplined and that's not to say that some don't fall off and some don't struggle. And, you know, when they get back to get it back because they're still teenagers. Um, but they are, they're working pretty consistently. Um, you don't really hear too much from them on the way home from trips because everyone's like headphones in, like working on a paper or doing this, doing that to try to make sure that they're ready to go. And I do think that having that professional development day at that beginning of the week is going to just help them that much, that much more. But I do appreciate the concerns because I have the same concerns when kids are gone from my class as well. Um, so looking at it from the other perspective, it can be challenging when kids are gone. I do, to Jane's point, and this is not, you know, my, our trip is better than other people's trips because it's not. Um, but, but I, but I do feel like there are some trips where it's a, it's a touristy trip and that is a great opportunity for kids. And it's not to take that away. Um, but this is a real academic trip, which I think, you know, with some touristy stuff, but the majority of what they're doing is really academic, both preparation and while they're there. Um, so I think it just is another level of, uh, of a, uh, opportunity for them.
Yeah.
No, I agree. I, I personally totally support it. I just want to make sure that we're having these full conversations as a district in terms of, you know, pulling forty kids out impacts someone's, you know, the staff, the faculty, everybody. Thank God that attendance thing isn't an issue. It's great. You know, I, I think it's great. I really do.
I, I'm, I fully think that like, I, this is going to be a fantastic trip. But to be the bad cop, I'm going to, I mean, we're approving a trip for nine days, but the conference is three or?
Four.
Four days. So I guess that's where.
I mean, it's like it's five days they're missing of school. So it's four days.
No, I'm just saying we're proving, we're proving a trip for Model UN.
Yeah.
When that particular part of the days they're missing is like four days. You know what I'm saying?
I do understand, and I think, you know, the only thing that would be unfortunate is that if they're just going and attending the conference and coming home, they are sitting in a conference ballroom and they might as well be in Boston in a conference ballroom. So if we're going to spend the money to go to the conference, you know, overseas, they should try to experience some of that too. Because otherwise it really wouldn't be any difference, you know, it's a different group, you know, the kids sitting in the same conference room and, and that's about it.
I, I think the other thing is, like, especially if you take like the Spanish exchange trip last year, like we had, we had kids miss a whole week of school for that. But Model UN, what it does is allowing us to go for these extra days where we may miss, we may miss two more days of school than we would if we otherwise went and made it there right for Thursday and flew straight back. Um, you get the experience of, of being in another culture that you get with all these other exchange trips, but you also tack on that academic value. So I, I really think that if there's any reason that students, that we're going to have forty students miss five days of school, Model UN is the reason.
I think you'll win, Nikolai.
And I also just, I want to say too that our timing is, is chosen on purpose. Uh, because sometimes we have these trips and I, and I, I, I could go on about, you know, from a teacher perspective. But, you know, like sometimes we have these trips right before AP exams or right, do you know what I mean? And the timing of the trips is really poor and kids really do struggle. Because kids were coming back for Disney the day before my exam last year. Um, and that is really unfortunate because they've worked the entire, or, yeah, that was you. So it's unfortunate because they've worked all year long on preparing for the exam. And so we've chosen the dates so that they aren't as disruptive for the students' learning. But I do recognize that it is still a lot of time.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, out of country field trip to, uh, the Model UN in Geneva.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good job, man.
I know.
Good job. It's why we brought them.
Can I just say something? So just about this is making me think about how we've talked as a committee about wanting to do a better job of, um, publicizing the awesome things that are happening in our school system. This strikes me as a perfect opportunity. I think in the past, I've kind of tangentially known what Model UN was. It sounds impressive, sure, but I think we tonight just learned so much more about what it actually is. And I'm going to definitely check out the Instagram account, but I feel like.
It's well done.
But I feel like just doing more as a system on our parts, but also everyone else to, to just be able to showcase, like, look at this really incredible thing, you know, to the point of getting younger kids excited as they're looking ahead to high school. But also the broader community to understand what it is that we as a community are supporting.
And we certainly can help out in any way to do that. Um, and then also, you know, we're happy when we get back to come in and, and share if that's something that the committee would like us to do so that we can kind of be out in the public, kind of sharing the work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Non-union and union personnel job description. Turn it over to Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Ms. Friendly. These next two positions are part of our restructuring of our technology department. And, uh, I want to give a shout out to our new, uh, technology educational director, uh, Ms. Jackie Frangello. And, um, by her moving up the ladder into that position, it's created an opening with her position, which is the Technology Integration Specialist. And I just want to clarify because it was a little unclear in the agenda that this is a, a union position. This is an STA position. The other position, the IT Operations Coordinator is a non-union position. So those are the two positions we're voting on tonight for job descriptions. Where the Technology Integration Specialist position already existed and Jackie took over that new role. It was an opportunity for us to, uh, look at that, um, job description that is, was outdated and updated with her input. We also collaborated with, uh, our HR department and Ms. Fluker along with the STA leadership. So I want to thank them and a collaborative effort to get feedback on this. Before we move on to the committee tonight, in executive session to share the details of it, I would ask for a vote in the affirmative on both these positions. The second position, the IT Operations Coordinator, um, is a new. The second position, the IT Operations Coordinator, um, is a new position added to the budget with the approval of the school committee last year. So thank you very much. It's an extremely helpful position that complements the other positions and kind of puts us in a position now where we can have a full operational, uh, technology department with the leadership positions able to focus on leadership vision, planning, those types of things. And we have an operational wing as well. So we have a true department, um, with the approval of these two positions.
Great, thank you. Any discussion, comment, or comments? Okay. Take a motion on the first, uh, Technology Integration, nope, wrong, IT Operations Coordinator.
Uh, I'll make a motion that the school committee votes to approve the non-union personnel IT Operations Coordinator job description as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Union Personnel Technology Integration Specialist Secondary Job Description as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to note, again, these were already budgeted in our 2024, 25 budget anyway. So no new, no, no budgetary impact at all.
That's correct. And while I'm on the mic, may I just give a few more minutes for a public announcement that I think is important for the community to hear that I'm gonna turn over regarding MCAS that's coming up that I want Mr. Lynch to get. Quick update on it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So tomorrow, uh, this week, Superintendent Burkett and I participated in the, uh, MCAS and Accountability Updates from the States. So, uh, we're just updating you that tomorrow at 10:00 AM, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education meets in Massachusetts and they talk about the results from the 2024, uh, MCAS. And we have, uh, scheduled our update, School Committee, on Monday, October 7th, but we just wanted to let you know that the state will talk about the general results tomorrow. Until that time, all results are embargoed. The state likes to, um, sort of share the, uh, general trends. So they'll do that tomorrow, um, as well as the, the school accountability piece. They'll talk about that. But we just wanted to let you know that we'll be, um, digging a little bit into the data at the October 7th in a more detailed way on October 7th. And our, uh, our teachers are, and principals are already using that data to think about looking at our curriculum and, um, looking at trends and any curriculum gaps and things like that. So we just wanted to let you know that's on the radar and the state will talk about it tomorrow and we're prepared to share that with you, uh, two weeks from today.
Fantastic. Looking forward to it. All right, uh, some committee updates. Ms. Fenwick and Ms. Lindblom. With Mr. Lynch's help as well.
Okay, so I think we, um, mentioned this before, that this is the, um, updates to the Title IX policies that are coming actually from the federal level to all states. And Massachusetts has already been pretty well aligned with some of the, um, changes that the federal government wanted to make on this. So as a state, we are not making as drastic or as many, um, adjustments as in some other places. So in our packet are all of the different policies. But I'm gonna pull up the document that talks about the, it's called the fact sheet, um, because that's probably the best place to look, just to understand what, um, the differences are. And I don't know if, Janice, if you wanna say anything else, kind of big picture, if we need to go through these or people have questions, I'm not really sure how to.
Well, I mean, due to the law changing and, um, we had to update our policies. And everything was looked at, um, by our, our lawyer. So, um, yeah, all these policies were, you know, there were some changes that were made just to, um, have us in compliance. So it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah. Yep. Um, and Assistant Superintendent Lynch is our Title IX Coordinator, I think, is that the word? Um, and so he is the one who would be kind of in charge of implementing, um, the process and making sure that things are going as they're supposed to be. And that will include training staff, um, and building leaders to make sure that everyone is aware of, um, any changes to the policy. And just, it's a good opportunity, I think, just for re-education on these policies anyway. Um, I think it needs a refresher now and then. It's quite dry, but when you need it.
Right.
So it is really important and I think this is also just a nice opportunity to have a refresher for everyone involved.
Sounds good to me. So we should review that maybe and then we'll vote.
Yeah, I mean, typically I think it's easier to talk about, um, a policy. This is kind of a bundle and they're all really detailed.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, you know, if anyone has questions, but yeah, I think at, at the next meeting, we would, that would be our second meeting, quote unquote. And then, um, we would vote, I believe. So between now and then, it is helpful if you all want to, so sure you're familiarizing yourselves a bit more.
Okay.
And then is there anything else you wanted to add, Ryan?
I think you've, I think you've done a good job. I think, um, you, you'll see districts around the Commonwealth in some of their first, um, few meetings following suit, doing what we're doing. Sometimes people see Title IX and they wonder about sports. In this case, the final regulations do not include any new rules governing eligibility criteria for athletic teams. So if that question comes up, that's in the fact sheet. Um, the grievance procedure outlines what people could expect if, um, somebody wants to follow the Title IX process for, uh, sex-based harassment, uh, or discrimination. So those are good ones to look at. I think, um, our two school committee members have covered all the other relevant, uh, pieces and I appreciate both of your time going through them in our, in our meetings.
Great. All right. Anything else?
Um, just the, the, the policies that are in the backup are the final drafts. I don't know if it'd be helpful.
Those are the ones you want us to review.
Yep, but, um, I mean, we got versions of, um, highlights of what was added. So I don't know if you wanted to see that to compare. I mean, it's, well, you don't really have to be leeway.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is all really.
This is not a leeway thing, right. It's not, it's not leeway.
And in fact, if there were to be, uh, an incident now that was, that came up, we would have to rely on the federal, um, changes, even though our policies are, are obviously they proceed to such a public schools. And so even if, you know, so it's just kind of, we gotta just finish, do this and we gotta do it now because we wanna make sure that our policies are, are right.
Okay. That makes sense. All right, we will review what is in the backup and if anyone has questions, we'll bring them to you on the 7th. I think you have that date right for our next meeting.
So for the next meeting, you'd like a second reading and a vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, um, approval of minutes. We have some minutes from September 9th, 2024. Anyone?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2024.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No warrants and no correspondence. Any other business?
Um, I just give a, um, I guess a couple comments. Number one is I did reach out to all, to the town side to add you all as the liaisons or subcommittee members, and I don't know if you've been included on anything. I don't really have a way of doing it. I just asked them to do it and I assume they do. But I, I got CC'd on one of my new committees, so I'm not sure if everyone else did.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and on that note, um, as I went through the process, I recognized that, um, on our, again, liaison list, we just have West Cork as a sister city. We actually have Cape Verde and we have Souci Omri. So again, I don't really know what our roles are in those committees. But as we define what those roles are, I think we need to at least add those two additional ones. Maybe we just have a sister city liaison and you're all three. I don't really know, but that's what I came across in my, um, efforts. And I think that I am that liaison.
I think you are too.
Yes.
So you think we should maybe see what the, well, you would know then, what's the lift for West Cork?
I have no idea. I didn't even know that it was.
Okay, okay. So maybe we find that out and see if, like you said, we either do it one, one and one, or we have the sister city liaison who covers all three?
Yeah. So what, what my next effort was going to be was to reach out to all these, the chairs and say, what role do you want the school committee member to play in your committee? But it was kind of cumbersome and I haven't done that. I'm not quite sure if I'm gonna get a response. I didn't know if maybe I should create a survey. I didn't, I didn't really know rather than open in the response of what do you expect from us? But I still think for me, going on eight years, I still don't know what my roles are.
Yeah.
Unless it's a financial forecast and I have a vote. Other than that, I don't really know what my role is. And I don't know if the other committees know what our role is. So I, I, I don't even know if we're supposed to be defining that, but someone should. And I don't know why we, we can't take the initiative, but I don't know how best to facilitate that.
I mean, we could each reach out to the, the committee that we're supposed to be on and ask. I guess that's another way to think about it.
I also think a little survey.
Yeah, I think surveys actually.
Be really, I mean, assuming people would respond, that's the rub, right?
Right.
Cause I don't even, I don't really even know. I actually had an email ready to go and it just got cumbersome because I had like 12 different people to send it to, because I wanted it to come from us, the school committee. I didn't want it to come from the town saying, oh, the school committee is asking this. I wanted to say, hey, we are this, I am a school committee and I wanna know.
Yeah.
What you, uh, expect from us. I just haven't done it. Um, but I'm trying to figure out really what we want them to tell us in terms of what they expect from us.
And also, I think we should have a point of view too, right? Like, I mean, about what we think we would like or what makes most sense, you know? Like when I look at some of the, like, so who's on planning besides me? Is it just me? So you, Janice?
I think it's just.
Just me?
One person. I think it's just only, is a single.
So when I look at the agenda for Thursday, I'm kind of like, nothing on here applies to me. I will just be listening, which is fine. I don't mind doing that, but, um, it kind of feels like if, I don't know. Like maybe it makes more sense to look at the agenda and think, is there anything on here that relates back? Or is it okay if I'm just like listening on Zoom and in-person present, you know, those types of things make a big difference?
Yeah.
We all have kids at home, like being out of the house twice a week is tough.
Sure.
Or.
Yeah. Yeah, so what, so how do you think I should proceed? Survey, open-ended response?
I think either, I think either an email to all the committees, just saying we're really trying to understand historically the role of the school committee and curious what the chair's perspective is on, I mean, just really.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I had. I just didn't do it yet.
I would just do it.
Do any of them have the meetings to us? So I think, yeah. But they don't come to meetings.
Yeah. Who has a, who has a liaison to us?
Slack board.
Well, besides a Slack board. But I don't think the other subcommittees do.
Yeah, so. I don't know.
All right, I'll, I'll just, I'll do that and, um.
Why don't we, as a backup, whoever doesn't respond, then the person who's on, we'll have a better way to say, hey, this is me. I need to know.
Okay, okay. I'll do that.
Thank you. Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a good, it's worth it because I don't think we should be doing this just because we've always done it this way. And I'd rather have like two people attend the financial forecast and get you off of planning if we don't even need to be at planning.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless they invite us because there's some specific, so like, I just feel like we should use our time in the best way that advocates for our, our kids and our families.
I think if, if there's something on their agenda that they think, oh, this relates to the schools, then I think they should invite us.
Yeah.
You know, and, and proactively do that. I think that makes a ton of sense.
And I, I know this has been going on for a couple of years and we've been on the charter review, but which committees we really get a vote on? And I tried to do that document, but I don't even know what's accurate. I still don't, I know that in the charter, we weren't supposed to get a vote on capital.
But we still do.
We still do.
Last year I did, for sure.
Yeah, so, so in that sense.
It has to do with the state, I think, for the holdup in, uh.
Something hadn't been approved in the charter.
So in that vein, in the capital planning, because we get a vote, I think that our, that unfortunately Maria has to go to every meeting because she's gonna be voting.
And I, I actually do think capital planning is worth your time because you get to learn about like how we're spending our money on different projects and where we sit in these pro. I think it's very important. I mean, I want a lot to make a forum. So I think we do actually have a.
Do we have a vote on planning?
We do. No.
Do you have a vote on capital?
Capital. Capital planning.
Wait, what's, what's, oh, you're planning war?
I have a vote.
I'm sorry.
So it's confusing.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, planning war, I have no idea.
I have very, I'm very confused why we're on planning war. I don't understand why.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I understand capital planning and I understand financial forecasts. Those make sense.
Thank you for clarifying. I didn't know we even had a planning board liaison, okay.
I will tell you this, two cities stuff, it's a ton of work. It's so, I, I was just saying, if you're saying one person doing it all, I think we should be mindful of, because it, it can be a lot.
The sister cities?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's just a lot of events and activities and so just thinking strategically about, again, what's, you know, what's important about that for the school committee and who should be doing what.
Yeah, it could be like a two-person one.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Yeah, cause I just know. I mean, I think they're great events. I think they're really interesting. I just, it's, it's a lot going on with those, um, often. So just to keep that in mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a work in progress, but I have the email ready to go. I just, I just.
I say start by sending the email like Carrie said, and then we'll see what happens and we.
I mean, I can just make, you can send it to the town and then they can send it to our committee.
No, I think.
I'll reach out directly.
All right, I'll continue.
See what you get back and then if you need us as liaisons to those committees to follow up with our committee, representative committees, we can do them. They'll pull it all together.
Okay.
Cause it's, it's, it is that twofold, like what do they, what could we be doing for them? But then also what, you know, it's that two-way really, actually, to go back and forth. Okay, fantastic. Um, any future agenda items of note?
Well, I'm just really curious. I love that our student reps are bringing the voice of the students and the voice, the students mentioned DEI and mental health. And I, I would love to hear from folks in those areas just to educate our students, let our students know what we're trying to do. I don't know, I just think if our students are voicing these curiosities, we should act and make information available. And so I don't know what that looks like, Bill, specifically, but maybe just have, I don't know, a report or share like initiatives. I don't know. I'll leave that to you to decide. I feel like I wanna honor what the students are bringing to us, so.
Yeah.
I think, um, that small sample, it's the leadership in my own, so. Yeah, I think it's a good point. Um, Principal Larranger shared with me, that's his leadership group that meets like his council, leadership council. So I think it, he's gonna share, he's, they have the results, obviously, and they're gonna talk about those and address them as a group.
Yeah.
So we organically talk to our student voice and then addressing those responses, so that'll be the follow-up.
Well, I think it would be awesome, because if you, if we put on a future agenda that that's coming, if, if Mr. Larranger has specific questions that the students have, then we could really like give somebody who's gonna report like what they actually are asking about, so.
But I think that ties to some budgeting things, because if they, if that comes through that group for next year, I mean, as we're already thinking about, you know, 25, 26, like tiny, tiny pockets that we can, you know, even that thousand dollar donation went really far on that classroom, so especially both areas, meant to help and DEI be work. It's like, it can really, you can go far with, you know, so I think so. All right, um, if nothing else, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 7:10.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.